Testing one, two. Good evening, welcome to the Revere Zoning Board of Appeals. If we could all rise and salute the flag, please.
And when leading to the flag, the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call the members of the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Lemonna.
Yes.
Here, Mr. Lopes.
Yes.
Here, Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Here, Mr. Pelton.
Here.
Here, and Chairman Tucker.
Here.
Here, Coram is present, and please note that the alternate member, Ms. Pratt, is absent today. First item on the agenda is application A 2419 on the application of NEFTA Realty Trust, LLC, 1176 North Shore Road, requesting a six-month extension of the one-year exercise period from the zoning board of appeals associated with the granted variances of A 2329 to enable the appellant to construct a 10-story, 144-unit apartment building on the properties known and numbered as 6 Agawam Street and 1198 North Shore Road.
Good evening. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Attorney Larry Semione. I represent the appellant before you today. My offices are in 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. The applicant is NEFTA Realty Trust. NEFTA Realty Trust seeks an extension of the variance granted by this honorable body in the previous year, and at that particular location, we were allowed 144 units and a 10-story building. Since that time, my clients have been working with his architect, Mr. Boski, who's here today, and will be able to explain any scheduled problems they're having or the status of their construction in order to make sure that the board understands why we're asking for the extension. I don't think I really have anything further, other than to note for the record that Section 48, Section 48, Section 10 states that if the rights authorized by the variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of such variance, such rights shall be provided, however, that the permit granting authority in its discretion and upon written explanation by the grantee of such rights may extend the time exercised for the period no greater than six months. If you have any questions for Mr. Boski, he's here.
No, not at all. It's just an extension. So, seeing that this is a public hearing for an extension, I would ask if there's any proponents, anyone in favor?
Angela Garino-Suaya, Ward 5 Counselor, I am in favor. It's just an extension, and I have no problem with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Are there any opponents, anyone opposed? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? There is a motion on the floor to approve? Second?
Second.
Yes, for roll call, please.
Shall the ZBA grant a six-month extension of the one-year exercise period associated with the granted variances of A 2329 to March 9th of '25? Mr. Lemonna?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the time extension has been granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members.
Next application is A 2420 on the application of Daniel Sika and Andrew Sika, Sika Family Realty Trust, 21 Green Street, Revere, Mass., requesting multiple variances from the zoning board of appeals to enable the appellant to file a planned unit development application for the construction of a 30-unit apartment building at 21 Green Street.
Good evening, counsel. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, the members of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Attorney Larry Semione. I have a law office at 300 Broadway, Revere, Massachusetts. This evening, I represent Daniel Sika, trustee of the Sika Family Realty Trust, along with his brother Andrew Sika, also the trustee of the Sika Family Trust, along with trustees of 21 Green Street. This particular variance sought is a variance that seeks the opportunity for my client to, if granted, these variances will be able to go before the honorable members of the city council and seek a planned unit development. This particular property is located in the Ted District. The project in mind will bear the resemblance that we are going to show you today, which is 30 units, one bedrooms. If you look at the application that was submitted, the applicant states, as to the nature of the variance, that the applicant shall require zoning relief prior to filing for its PUD application to want A, noncompliance with sections, Revere Revised Zoning Ordinance 1224010, Table of Dimensional Regulations with respect to the minimum lot area, the minimum lot frontage, the minimum lot front, side, and rear setbacks, maximum principal building coverage, and usable open space. The second part of the variance is required also include a floor area ratio. So B, noncompliance with Revere Revised Ordinance 1720020, Table of Parking and Loading Requirements, seeking relief from the fact that we've only got eight spaces that are currently there on the lot. And then there's the distance between the parking and the principal structure, which is Revere Revised Zoning Ordinance 1728020A, that allows for parking being located 100 feet away from a particular structure where the parking assists with. If the applicant should attain the zoning relief set forth herein, then the proposal will be a 30-unit building, approximately a single-family, and that project will make its way to the zoning board of appeals.
You're at the zoning board?
I'm sorry, make its way to the city council. Thank you for correcting me. So I have with me, I have with me Mr. Sekanoff and also Mr. Blaisdell, and let them make a brief presentation as to the project.
Chair, members of the board, thank you all.
You have to speak at the microphone, I'm sorry.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Board, Chair, members of the board, thank you first. We come to propose a 30-unit, single-bedroom, five-story building on the property at 21 Green Street. As you see in the little pamphlet that you have, there are six, there are five stories, and there are six units on each floor. There's no basement. It's strictly a residential building. The base would be brick, and the upper floors would be clad in a clabbered-type material. Obviously, color's just not yet decided yet, but we just chose a blue for now. Windows have nice little views. There's plenty of air and light for the units. As you know, it fronts on Lee Burbank Highway and backs up onto Green Street. We did some quick little elevations to show the size and scale of the building. This would be immediately adjacent to Commonwealth Auto Body, and there's a larger building up on one end of the lot, which is a four-story on a little higher elevation office building that got renovated. And of course, down the street, the buildings get smaller, and this fronts onto a residential neighborhood, so it kind of shields the residential neighborhood from the traffic, as Lee Burbank, as you know, is quite busy. Aerial views of the building with its adjacency. So I'll open it up for questions.
This is a public hearing, so I would seek anyone in the audience, as far as proponents, anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Anyone in opposition? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Samantha McGordy, 18 Green Street. So...
That's just their time.
Oh, okay. So I and my neighbors are in opposition to this for a couple of reasons, primarily because it is gigantic, proportionate to the single-family and duplex homes that are on the street. This is very misleading, this picture. The idea that it's going to open into the feeder to the highway, and that's the entrance is unlikely, but it is adjacent to single-family homes. They tore down a single-family home there and are now suggesting to put 30 residences in place of what was a single-family home. With no parking, the parking that they're offering is also misleading, because the same person who converted that office building had to provide parking when they converted it for the office building, and they used that same lot for that apartment building. So the idea that all of these spaces are available, and in addition during the day, Commonwealth Auto Body uses that parking lot and those proposed spaces for their vehicle, and this is all of the same owner for all of those buildings. And so he's, I feel like, playing pretty fast and loose with like, what's actually going to be happening functionally. The apartment building that's approved on the end of the street now has significantly increased the traffic on the street. The street, for all intents and purposes, Green Street, should be a one-way street. You can't have two cars going at the same time. And now he's proposing even more, you can kind of see there, building fully up to the property line, including up to the property line of a single-family house next to it. So in this picture, it looks like there's this big open space in between. There is not. You can see from some of the plans that were submitted, he's suggesting completely overshadowing the adjacent houses that are there on Green Street. Green Street only has seven houses on it. Now we're going to add 30 more people in this one little footprint, so.
Is there anyone else, any other opponents?
Hey, everyone. Sean Mackel, 18 Green Street. So I kind of live diagonally across the street from this. So I also oppose just the size of this building. I mean, the site itself is just a little bit bigger than a Little League infield diamond, and he'll put five stories on top of this. And if you look at the 50-foot max height, that is the top of the roof deck, and there's a parapet above that. They don't represent an elevator penthouse, and who knows if they'd be a stair penthouse. So like, we're talking, it's getting taller and taller. And it's also located on the southeast part of the Green Street. So if you look at one of the renderings, I mean, like this right here, the sun is behind it. It's going to block all of the sunlight for the entire Green Street. So there's the height, and then the floor plan, the footprint of it, I mean, again, fast and loose with the zoning to try to get the maximum height, but they need variances to use almost 100% of the site for the footprint. It's just too big for the context of Green Street. And then, in looking at the floor plans, I had a question, like, what is their strategy for trash? Because there's no trash room, and now there's no site, no room on-site for trash. And if the strategy is they're going to put it on an adjacent site in a dumpster, well, seems kind of a poor strategy, number one. And number two, you know, neighbors don't want to live next to an open dumpster. So I'm just putting that out there as well. So again, and it also has an impact on Green Street itself. Green Street's basically, like she said, a one-way street. Entering and exiting Green Street is really sketchy. You can't exit and enter at the same time. The person who's entered Green Street has like, stopped on the parkway for the person to leave. So if we're adding more cars to this, we're adding more potential hazards and danger for people coming in and out of Green Street. So I feel, just big picture, look, it's an empty site. We know that something's going to be built there. Let's not, you know, let's not be naive. But this is the wrong size, scale, and usage and contacts for Green Street.
Okay, thank you. Any other opponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak? You want to clarify?
I'd just like to finish my, I thought I did have one thing to say.
Yep.
So for the record, on behalf of the applicant, the enforcement of the zoning law would result in a serious hardship to the applicant, who is the owner of the property, and that the applicant will not be able to develop the property as proposed. The grant of the variances will allow for development of the parcels, increasing its economic value, resulting in an increased tax revenue to the city, while at the same time minimizing the impact of the area and establishing an aesthetically appropriate development for the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any members? I got a question, Larry. Larry? Where is the entrance and exit to this building?
The proposed exit, the entrance will be on Lee Burbank Highway. We did have a meeting with the ward councilman, and that was one of the things that she suggested, and we agreed to that. She also suggested that it would not be a 50-foot building, but it would be a 46-foot building, and we've agreed to do that as well.
Thank you. Now, Larry, one thing was brought up, and I was sitting, I was here when they did the 333 building and converted it to residential. From my knowledge, no parking was part of the top of the street there. Am I correct to say that?
That is absolutely correct.
It was all within that purview of next to custom?
The additional parking needed for the 333 conversion building that went from office space to residential, that extra parking came from the Commonwealth Auto location.
Yes, that's what we approved.
And that's where it's at.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear. That's what we approved. If there's anything that's being done otherwise, then that's something you take up with other authorities, building department, whatever. This here will go in front of the city council for a special permit after, if we were to vote on this. So with that said, I would ask if there's a motion on the floor to approve?
A motion to approve.
Is there a second? Roll call, please. The standard conditions with the, our standard condition, including the parking?
The standard conditions incorporated into the question are as follows: if the rights authorized by this variance are not exercised within one year of the date of the grant of this variance, the rights shall lapse. This variance shall not be valid until the appellant has recorded this variance in plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the City Clerk and Building Inspector of the City of Revere. The appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit, and the property shall not be eligible for participation in the City of Revere's residential and visitor-on-street permit parking program. Shall the zoning board of appeals grant the relief requested, subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemonna?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the variance has been granted, subject to those conditions.
Mr. Chairman, members, thank you. On behalf of my clients.
Next item on the agenda is application A 2421 on the application of Robert Del Greco, trustee of Franklin Holdings Realty Trust, 221 Reservoir Ave., Revere, Mass., requesting a special permit from the ZBA pursuant to Revere Revised Ordinances, Section 1724032, conditions for a special permit for undersized lots to enable the appellant to construct a single-family dwelling at 35 Liberty Ave., Revere, Mass.
Good evening. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Nancy O'Neil, and I am an attorney with Di Ambrosio LLP, located at 14 Proctor Avenue. I, along with Attorney Jerry Di Ambrosio of Di Ambrosio LLP, represent the applicant in this matter, Mr. Robert Del Greco, trustee of Franklin Holdings Realty Trust, and we are joined here tonight by Mr. Del Greco and his family. So this proposal is for the construction of a single-family home on an existing foundation at 35 Liberty Avenue, with that home to be occupied by Mr. Del Greco's son. So what we are proposing is a modest, single-family home with off-street parking to be occupied by lifelong Revere residents. So this is not an income or rental property, this is a single-family home for family members. So why are we here tonight? The 35 Liberty Avenue property is an undersized lot, meaning that this lot does not meet the lot size or frontage requirements for the RA1 district. And because that lot is undersized, a special permit of the ZBA under Revere Zoning Ordinances 172432 is needed for construction of the single-family home. So this special permit entails requirements relating to lot sizes and frontages of surrounding properties, as well as certain dimensional criteria. And as we do not meet those requirements, we are requesting variances of special permit requirements under RZO 172432A4, A5, A6, as well as Section B. So special permit requirements may be varied under Mass. laws, Chapter 48, Section 10, which empowers the ZBA to grant variances from the terms of the applicable zoning ordinance or bylaw. And Massachusetts courts and recent case law have routinely upheld the granting of variances from special permit requirements. And what we are requesting here tonight is nothing unusual or out of the ordinary. Boards of appeal across the state are granting variances from special permit requirements to allow projects to proceed at the board's discretion. So the ZBA has full authority under Massachusetts law and the Revere Zoning Ordinances to vary the terms of the undersized lot special permit. So it has been said that Revere Zoning Ordinances 172430 provides a blanket prohibition against zoning relief in North Revere. This is simply not true. Nowhere in RZO 172430 does it state that variances are not allowed in North Revere. RZO 172430 generally provides for special exemptions from dimensional requirements for certain pre-existing lots outside of North Revere. But as relevant here, 172430 does not provide special exemptions for North Revere, and we have not applied for relief under that section. So overall, that section is irrelevant to our request for a special permit tonight. So Massachusetts case law, principles of statutory interpretation, and the terms of the Revere Zoning Ordinances support the ZBA's authority to vary special permit requirements, and this property is well-suited to variance relief. The property is subject to a north-south grade change of 10 feet, and this is a severe grade change that runs diagonally across the property. And as you can imagine, this severely complicates construction on the property and limits placement of buildings. So Mr. Del Greco would undergo extreme hardship in terms of construction costs if that foundation needed to be torn out and relocated to an unsuitable area. So this proposal here tonight represents a modest, a single-family home with sufficient parking, and I would now like to turn it over to Attorney Di Ambrosio, who would also like to provide you with some information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the ZBA. I think Nancy laid out the law for you folks. You have the absolute right to vary the requirements of a special permit. The law is absolutely crystal clear in Massachusetts, especially in light of the last three cases over the course of the last year, which, by the way, is the way the law is trending in the state of Massachusetts. And the reason it's trending that way is that we are in a housing crisis currently in Massachusetts. We are, I believe, 47th out of 50 states in terms of permits for building homes. And here, what's before you here is the oxymoron of all situations. In my 30 years of practicing law, I don't think I've seen a more odd situation. We have a lot that's a buildable lot in other areas of the city that's currently situating a foundation with no home on it. Again, this is a lot that's roughly 3,800 square feet, which is a buildable lot in other areas of the city of Revere, that's currently situating a foundation. There is a foundation there, that, by the way, the Del Greco family, who's sitting to my left, the dad and the two sons, of which Michael Del Greco will be the occupant of this single-family home, we have a foundation with no home on it in the middle of a housing crisis. So you might wonder, why? Why are we here? Is this an anomaly? Is this house some sort of castle that they're trying to build on this foundation? No. It's 2,000 square feet. It's a 2,000-square-foot, single-family home. Well, you ask, is it an anomaly? Are there no other homes in this area on lots that are 3,800 square feet? No, absolutely not. A review of the home shows that 20 Breeden Street, right around the corner... Sure, that lot is 3,300 square feet, 500 square feet smaller. 156 Salem is 2,915 square feet, almost 1,000 square feet smaller. 166 Salem Street is 3,600 square feet, 200 square feet smaller. 34 Grand, that's 3,755 square feet. 11 Grand View, 3,766 square feet. 19 Grand View, 3,649 square feet. 25 Grand View, 3,349. 95 Liberty, 91 Liberty, 87 Liberty, 8 Walnut, all smaller lots than the lots that's before you today. I don't mean to sound indignant here, but we have an empty foundation in the middle of a housing crisis, when there are over a dozen houses around it built on a lot smaller than this. So the question becomes, does this ZBA have authority to grant these variances, like you do everywhere else other than North Revere?
Jerry, I'm not going to cut you, I'm going to cut your shot. We got a citizen of this opinion saying we can vote on this, so I'm going to end it right there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I suggest, I suggest that not only do you vote on it, that you vote positively on it, in recognition of where we are, not only in the city of Revere, but the state of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Seeing it's a public hearing, are there any other proponents, anyone in favor? And if you could read the proponents that were given to the city clerk by email?
There were several proponents submitting their testimony via email. They are as follows: Angela Windsor, 48 Grand View; Maria Cutler, 111 Breeden's; Dennis Di Olivera, 58 Breeden's; Alessandra Barone, 87 Liberty; James Powers, 91 Liberty; and Robert and Gina Mahoney, 2 Paul Street.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel.
How you doing? Counselor Gigno, Ward 6 Counselor. I just want to speak on, see, right now, we know we're going to get up there, a single-family house. With the current laws in Massachusetts, we don't know what could happen in the next year or two, as far as the lot sizes and housing, and possibly if two families go in that same lot. So like, consider, you know, the options that we have against us, as opposed to what we have in front of us, where we know what's going to be put there. And that's, to basically be in favor of this here, based on what could be there, if this is not built. We know the developer, we know who's building it, and we know the background. And right now, there's a foundation there with a bunch of trees on it, and that's the basis of my being in favor of this here.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Any opponents, anyone opposed? Kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. If you could press that button, and there you go. You can move that down if you'd like, so that it's right in.
My name is Patricia Ferengue. I live at 23 Liberty Avenue in North Revere, and I oppose to this building. I can't understand why it's even near to begin with. It was illegally built, 1999, it went to court, Vincent Brandanelson had papers and everything, and the owners that are next to this house are over here. They just bought the house about a year, not even a year. Now, I don't understand how this building, this foundation's been here this long, and nothing was built on it, because it was stopped by court. Now, I oppose to this, between the water, the traffic coming off Route 1, coming up to our end of Paul Street, going down to Lynn Street, Liberty Ave., going into Revere, it is a mess. And I have water damage. When it rains, the sewage builds up, and we have water coming down... When it rains, the sewage builds up, and we have water coming down from up the hill with the new houses that were built, that gets water up there, and we get rocks and whatnot. Now, the people next to me is, the sewage line is sunken in.
Man, that's not...
Well, I'm just saying, I oppose, I oppose to this wholeheartedly.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
You have me.
Any other opponents?
Oppose.
We have several oppositions on file here, but if you'd like to speak, sir, just...
Yes. Richard De Perry, 40 Grandview Ave. I'm one of the abutters. He mentioned it's a modest house. It's a 32-story, it's a 32-foot building that's going to be staring at me. I mean, that, he mentioned all these little, you know, smaller lots. The house is a regular-sized house. This isn't a regular, this is a tower. So I don't understand, and, right, the found, we fought, what, almost 30 years ago, because they were trying to build the house because the land's unbuildable, he snuck in and put the foundation before he got any approval. That's when they had to do a cease and desist, supposed to remove the foundation, never did it, and just let the property, you know, let that stuff stay. So, I mean, I don't understand, if it's not buildable 30 years ago, you know, did it, like, grow because of the rain? Did it, you know, magically get bigger? So, so I'm totally opposed, like I says, because I'm going to have a tower staring at me when I'm in my backyard. Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Norma Tango, 51 Grandview Ave. I received a letter too on it, and my biggest concern too is the height. And the other concern is, if you okay this, for this property, there's property behind me on Walnut Street that can't be built. But they'll come up for a variance, and they'll get it, and they'll be towered. So this is the issues that these people are facing, that they're all small homes. They can say whatever they want to say, it's the size of these homes that are on these small lands, but they're single-family, they're not up and down. They're small homes. This place, they're going up high. So I don't think it's fair, I think we have to watch and look and see, there's, there's a lot of land in Revere that's non-buildable, so people are just going to come and put towers in, and I don't think that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Xin Zhao, 39 Liberty Ave. So we are the direct abutter of the lot, and we oppose the building plan. So I'd like to start with readdressing a couple of facts. So we reached out to Frank Stringi, the chef planner of the building department, to make sure our understanding of the code is correct. So our neighborhood fall in the North Revere overly zone, which has very strict zoning requirements. So as defined by the city code, any lot which is built upon with this zone must comply with the current dimensional requirements. No lot shall be exempt from the lot's frontage and other dimensional requirement provided in this title. So what is the current requirement? So the current requirement is 8,000 minimum square feet and 80 feet in frontage. So the lot we are discussing is not even close to meeting any of this criteria. And also, it's not just about the size and the frontage, it's about the minimum frontyard, the minimum sideyard, the minimum rear yard, and the maximum building height. So I know zoning variance should be allowed for special permit, but it's only applicable for HD, LD, and LL zones, but not in North Revere overly zone. So in the zones where the variances are permitted, the lots need to have both a larger area and frontage than 50% of residential parcels over there. And if we do any simple calculation, you can find that lot is smaller than over 50% of all the parcels in the same excessive block or the party of interest, which means abutter to abutters. And the applicant, in their package, they didn't provide any certification or any credential suggesting meet this criteria. And fourth, so back to 1990s, the city respected the zoning ordinances, in fact, and voted two unlawful building permits on this lot. One is for one single family and one is for two-family. So the Superior Court actually upheld the city's decision. So a substantial amount of the efforts and public resources had been spent on this matter. And without any changes to the zoning regulation in the North Revere overly zone, I don't know why this whole situation, whole conversation is restarted. So I would also mention a few quick things that are more related to us as direct abutters. So when the previous owner of our house, Winston Brandano, lived here, so the unlawful construction on that lot caused severe water damage to the house foundation. And that problem could not be solved until the city voted their building permits and issued a cease and desist order to stop that unlawful construction. So there has been a longstanding water drainage problem in Liberty Ave and surrounding neighborhoods. So the proposed construction may reintroduce all the water damage to us and also worsen the drainage situation in our neighborhood. So the proposed structure is almost as twice as high compared to ours, and it's located uphill to us. So the distance between their wall to our wall, so please note here, is wall-to-wall distance, not wall-to-fence or anything like that. So it's less than 20 feet. So this kind of overcrowded arrangement goes completely against the reason we chose to live in the North Revere. And I believe you should receive a couple letters and also the petition letter signed by a lot of neighbors. Among these neighbors fall direct abutters around this house, they are against it. And all the neighbors we reached out are living within the 300 feet, so we live in the same block. Therefore, we urge the board to consider all the facts that's already written in the black and white, as well as the voices from the neighbors who actually live here, in order to make a correct decision. So as Patty just said, we bought the house last year, we are the new neighbors to the community. As the new homeowners and new members to Revere, we may not have a very long-established relationship with the people, but we place our trust and our, to our very lovely and trustworthy neighbors, and above all, we put our trust in the fairness and integrity of the city of Revere. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents? If there's any other opponents after this, please step up to the microphone so we can move this along. Good evening. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Tucker. My name is Brandy Soto. I live at 32 Liberty Ave, right across the street where the proposal's at. Jerry's a great speaker, I just want to compliment him, that was great, but the fact is that it's not true. It's not, the foundation's there, but it's an illegal foundation. They put it in, they did a cease to desist. He was great, really convincing, but when you put something illegally, it doesn't make it right. So it's not like this is there and it's like, you know, something that you're going to waste, and there's no, there's no hardship there, because it wasn't even supposed to be there. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I'm not worried about what the councilman said about who's going to come and do something, because the fact is that there's not supposed to be anything there. I've been living at Liberty Ave for the last almost four years, have a big lot. This place is directly in front of me, I have young kids, I have a basketball court in front of my house. The reason I bought this house was because when it was built, we had space between everybody. Revere is thickly packed. This is why North Revere is the most desirable area, because there's not that congestion. We don't have everybody on top of everyone. You have Joe that moved in there a year ago, great people. The foundation, which is illegally built, that's not supposed to be there, would literally put his house to Mr. Limanin. That's how we would be every morning, from his house to my house. My house to his house, he'd have to be almost across the street from him to be near me. I didn't pay for a house for that reason. Then, if we're going to go about economic reasons, I'm going to lose value on my house. I'm going to lose value, because now I have a house that's across the street from my house, it's the size of my garage. If that was the case, then why couldn't we have built three houses on my property? That's not fair to me, and it's not fair to my neighbors. So on top of all of this, more importantly, like I said, is the safety. I have young children. Everybody on my street knows me, because I park more cars on the street than everybody else. Everybody probably hates me for that reason here, but I have resident parking, and I have the parking. They're going to have one lane of parking to park whatever cars are going to be there.
They have two parking spaces on the lot?
Yeah, they have two parking spaces in alignment. The house is basically across the street, which is a tight street where, right now...
Okay, but by right, but by zoning, there's two parking spaces there. They're not asking for a variance for parking.
Absolutely, but what I'm concerned about is the other people that come. I only have two parking spaces as well, but I have tons of people that come to my street, and everybody here will tell you that the street is always packed up on, on the weekend because of my visitors. Now, I'm, yeah.
By you having all them visitors, they, they, they should stop building?
Absolutely not.
Okay, because that's what it's sounding like when you're saying.
So let me clarify, so it doesn't sound like that for you, Mr. Tucker. The reason is that I, I, looking at me? I have the space, and my property was there, and if I have people there parking, it belongs there. They don't have the space to, to have the parking or to even be there. They've put an illegal foundation there, and now they want to build on it. I'm directly across the street. When they come out of their driveway, they're going to pull up to, to my side of the sidewalk, right to, to the curve of my street where my basketball court is and my kids are playing outside. And now they're going to create more traffic on the street, correct?
But any house would do that, sir.
Right, but there's not supposed to be a house there, is the whole point.
Well, that's what they're coming in front of the Board of Appeals for.
And that's why we're here, to prevent that. So what I'm saying...
But they do have the right to be here, I want to make that clear.
Absolutely.
Someone said there wasn't, I went to the city solicitor, they do have the right to be here.
I've never said they don't have the right to be here, and if, for whatever reason they are allowed, it, it is what it is. But it shouldn't be, is what I'm saying. And since it shouldn't be, it shouldn't allow their visitors and the traffic that's coming to the area on a smaller lot that's not allowed. And it's going to bring an increased traffic, then you have the water flowing, you already have water flowing down. When they did the illegal foundation that they're talking about, they created water damage to the two neighbors next to them. So now they want to come in, the other day, they had to cut the tree, because they haven't maintained the property either, even though it's unbuildable, and the tree branch fell down. Now they came in, knocked down the tree, started cutting the tree down. They're not even maintaining it as an unbuildable lot. When they bought it, they knew it wasn't buildable. So it's not that they have a hardship.
Okay, that, as far as trees and stuff, are not part of the zoning Board of Appeals, so I...
I understand. I'm, I'm just telling, telling you how it's impacting the area and the aesthetic of the area, which is the, the reason why people buy there. I spent almost a million dollars on my home. So for a house the size of my garage to go up across the street to me, I don't think nobody here would like that.
Okay.
Which is the reason why I'm bringing that up. It's inconsistent with the whole area, it's going to bring a negative impact to our property value.
Okay, I timed everyone, you've reached the time, just like they did, so I have to cut you off.
I appreciate it, Mr. Tucker. Thank you for your...
No problem at all. Is there any other opponents?
Yes.
Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Waitong Ran, and I'm 46 Liberty Avenue. I'm against this plan, because, well, I want to basically have the following points. The first point is, I want to emphasize that I think for getting approval for this variance, there's has a, some, there are some requirements, I think, after reading this, reading through it, I think the, there's at least one requirement says the plan, if, for example, if we want to, if we want to allow this to happen, the land has to be larger than 50% of the land with the residential buildings in the same block. We did the calculation, and I think the, the current results that we get, with the current size, it's only about 21%, which is very far from 50% that's currently required. This is the first, the first point. The second point is, I want to remind the board, and also the chair, that they're, they are already to previously permit, that the, they have to build this foundation and the house, but see what happened? There are also lawsuits, and the, the result is, we cannot build the, the house here. I don't know what changed, because I read through the application, I don't see any specific plan in terms of fixing the previous issue that identified, and whether, I, actually, I don't know what's the, what specifically has changed, and I don't see any specific plans in terms of fixing the previous issues identified in the, in the previously issues. And then, I also want to respond to what basically the other gentleman had mentioned, that although there are a lot of neighbors that probably voted for this plan, but they are a lot, a little bit far away neighbors. For those that are currently sitting here, we are direct neighbors that sit, like, within 30, 300 feet to this site. I can't actually name of them. Basically, there are, like, for example, the...
We have all the names here, because they gave them, so...
Awesome. And then I also want to mention that, for example, that we, we completely understand there's a housing crisis across the country, but I don't think that we should, we can solve this problem by just allowing this variance to happen. I think if, for example, they think the North Revere is a region that we can have a land building, like, we can have smaller land to build a house, we can definitely change it. We don't have to require, like, 8,000 feet, square feet anymore, we can change it, but I don't think this is a place that we can try to solve that specific housing problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents? Seeing and hearing, and I'll, I'll close that side of the hearing.
There are other, just for the record...
You have to read, please, thank you.
Yeah, just for the record, the petition that was submitted in opposition were from the other following individuals who haven't already came up. Francisco Rosa, 41 and 61 Liberty Ave; Pedro Britas, 47 Liberty; Chuck Tron, 79 Liberty; Daniela Lopez, 31 Grandview; Mark Tango, 51 Grandview; Ellen Demadia, 166 Salem Street; and Lee Bendah, 25 Breeden's Lane.
Thank you. Any members, Mr. Speaker? I got a few words to say. I drive by all the lots that people want to build on, and that's one of the ugliest lots I've seen within the city. I don't live up there, but if I did, and if I was a neighbor, I would like to see a nice, single-family home built there. It's going to increase the value of the property in that area, and like the counselor said, having a single-family there with people that's been living in Revere for 30-plus years is better than having a two or three-family come down the line. That's all I have to say about the situation. Thank you. What's the wish of the council?
I have a question for the counselor. So what's the story about this foundation?
So there's, and, and I can understand the neighbors' frustration with this, but I think there's a lot of false information out there about the foundation. The foundation is not illegal. It was legally granted as a result of a permit. So the property owner at that time, who is not my client, who just bought the property in 2017, had applied for the permit. It was approved by the building inspector, and he moved forward and poured the foundation. During, during the tenure of building the house, the zoning changed in that area. What the motivation was in the early 1990s in the city of Revere up in Ward 6, as to what the motivation was, as to why the zoning changed, I think there was, my understanding there might have been a little bad blood between some parties, the zoning was changed, and so while the house was being built legally, not illegally, there's, there was a building permit issued for that foundation, and it's in the jacket. So while it was, while it was being built, the city changed the zoning and then withdrew the permit. That's, that's what happened. And so there was a lawsuit, there was a lawsuit in court, and at that point, the, the court said, well, it's up to the city, it's in their discretion, and if they are revoking it, they are revoking it. Hence, we're before you today, as you all know, any project that's denied has a two-year statute of limitation. So honestly, whatever happened in the 1990s, that was 30 years ago, the law was very different back then, as we cited the cases in the brief. The law on this issue has changed drastically, as has our current housing environment in the state of Massachusetts, and in particular, in the city. So that's why we're before you again. It is a legal presentation, it is a, a meritorious presentation. And I, I will also say one other point, that it's important that, that we don't, that mistruths aren't spread. The law just changed on August 6th of 2024, a month ago. The new law that's in place allows a judge on an appeal to require neighbors to post a $500,000 bond to cover the cost of the builder if frivolous complaints and frivolous appeals are followed. and frivolous appeals are followed. That's the law from a month ago. That is the law of Massachusetts right now. A judge is allowed, allowed to require the neighbors to post a five-hundred-thousand-dollar bond. So it's important to note that we, we can't spread misinformation about things. The reality is that that foundation was built pursuant to a properly issued permit by City Inspector Ferruzzi at the time, and then it was in the court process. It was held up, and that's fine, but it's thirty years ago. And here we are today, and this board has authority, and, and, and you have the right to vote on this, and I'd ask that you do. Thank you.
Can I say something else?
Okay, I'm not gonna go back and forth, but from, I, I want you to know that I brought this to the city solicitor to make sure that we could vote on it. And yes, in fact, the building permit was issued, it then went to court, and there's a foundation there because a house couldn't be built after it went to court. We are, we're very aware of that.
I don't think anyone's against a single-family home. It's thirty-two feet high.
And you have the right to build up to thirty feet by a matter of right. Am I correct? Just so you're aware, they're asking for a two-foot variance for height, because they have the right to build a home up to thirty feet. So what's in front of us, what's in front of us is, is. But they have the right to build up to thirty feet.
On a correct lot size.
Yes, but that's why they're here, asking for a variance, because they do have a right. Okay, I'm not gonna get into back and forth. I'm telling you that this went to the city solicitor so that we could make sure we could vote on this. They're asking for variances. What is the wish of the counsel? Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
And is there a second? I'd ask for a roll call, please. All the conditions.
The conditions, standard conditions of the zoning Board of Appeals are as follows. If the rights authorized by this special permit are not exercised within two years of the date of the grant of this variance, the right shall lapse. The special permit should not be valid until the appellant has recorded this very, the special permit and plan in the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds and submits document recording numbers and dates to the city clerk and building inspector of the city of Revere, and the appellant must receive site plan review approval prior to applying for a building permit. Shall the zoning Board of Appeals grant the special permit subject to those conditions? Mr. Lemina?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lopes?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Pelton?
Yes.
Yes, and Chairman Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted with those conditions. There's no further business.
No further business. Our next meeting will be October twenty-third.